Okay. Call this meeting to order. This is the zoning board appeals meeting. Monday, June 22nd, 2020. Matt, you want to call the roll? Okay. Nico?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Janie?
Here.
Charlie?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Tessie?
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Here.
Steve? He's absent. Okay. First order of business is approval of minutes from the June 1st meeting. Hopefully, everybody got those in the email. Any additions, corrections? Otherwise, a motion would be in order to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. Approved by Tessie, seconded by Charlie. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The first order of business tonight is a variance application by Emily Alt seeking a variance to permit construction of front yard fence on property located at 3919 North Atlantic Avenue, Peoria Heights, Illinois. The property is currently zoned R2. So Emily, you want to step up and just kind of tell us what you're doing and explain? We have your kind of layout and then kind of tell us what you're doing and then we'll ask you questions. And then if you want to address also the pool we just talked about, you can do that too.
Okay. So basically, we started to put up a fence around the front side of our yard. Couple different reasons. We do have two young children, three and two, who constantly want to run after the ball out in the road or the truck that goes out in the road. And there's constantly people flying and I will yell at people to slow down. They're constantly flying down the road. We also have dogs, so we needed that part of the fence as well. That's why we put it up. But also, the way that our house is set up, it's kind of all like over to the side. So the yard is here. So it's kind of like that's where we all play and hang out rather than the backyard is just kind of this small little area. So that's kind of a lot of where the traffic is. We have had people be cutting through our yard as well, which is not that big of a deal. I holler at them and say, hey, you know, please don't cross through our yard. You know, we have dogs. Not that they would do anything, but just for the sake of not crossing in our yard. And then also, we planned on doing the back as well along the alley.
So these property lines you have on your layout, are those known? I mean, you know that that's where your property line is or is it?
That's where the current fence is to separate our property line from the back.
Okay. And then the same in back, are you, do you know?
Yeah, but you have a right of way and you say five to 10 feet, but I mean, do you
know where your property line actually is in back?
I don't think anybody's ever actually showed us like.
Okay.
So if you can, because the fence can go on your property, but you can't put it in the right of way. So if we don't know where that, it's got to be more specific than five to 10 feet. Right. So we need to know where that line is so you can, because you can be right up on your line, but you can't go over that line, so.
Do you know if there's a stake? Usually, there's a property line stake at the edge of the property. Usually, it's buried underground sometimes.
Hmm hmm.
And you can find it usually with a metal detector maybe or something, but and if you can find one and you know your dimensions, you can pretty much find the others.
Or there's some people in the audience can help.
She doesn't know anything about property.
But I mean, the backyard fence is not a, I mean, for us, as long as it's not in the right of way and it's not over six feet.
Is there another house on that street that also has a front yard fence?
There's a lot of.
There's a couple of them, yes.
Yep.
And this is going to be the only picket fence that I could tell on that. So this is going to be the nicest fence on the street.
Yes.
By a far margin.
Yes.
And so then the only other question then was the pool question. So I don't know if anybody drove down the alley, but they have a pool in back. And so I told them that they needed to make sure that they, they already talked to the village about a pool permit and et cetera, but then I was asking if they're going to, they have to put a six-foot fence or some sort of a six-foot non-climbable something around their pool, so.
Well, the fence around the property is all part of the.
Yeah, we have the fencing for the back, but we were just stopped, so we didn't continue.
No, 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 I understand. Yeah. No, I just, even if you put a six-foot fence in the back and didn't put anything else around the pool, like it still wouldn't, I mean, your front yard is four foot, so it still wouldn't be a six-foot fence around the whole pool. So somehow, there, you have to have it around.
Around the whole pool.
The whole pool.
Right.
And then that fence to the, that it's going to tie in, are you going to tie into that fence on the south? Because there wasn't a, there was like an old wooden fence there, but.
There's actually a lady who just moved into that property next to us. She's got a three-year-old and a five-year-old and she's working her birthday.
Okay, so she's going to finish that?
Yeah, she's going to run like six-foot ladder down.
Okay.
So able to pull.
Okay. So any other questions?
Well, are we able to vote on this if we don't know where the property lines are?
Well, the, we would say that they have to be within their property lines, right? I mean, that's the, the condition.
And then as far as the pool permit, that'll just be dealt with by the village.
Yeah, they, it's like a building permit, so. Okay, so we'll go through the, oh, is there anybody in the audience that is here for, didn't think so. Audience comments are now closed. You can sit down.
Wait a minute, that's my shortcut.
Oh, you cut through their yard? You're one of the kids?
Every day I walk through that yard, just kidding.
So the variance, the description is a variance for the front yard fence. We'll go through the standards for the variance so everybody can follow along this time. That's, this is the, so it's the one with the boxes. With a strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction, alternation of buildings or structures, or to the use of the land impose practical difficulties or a particular hardship upon the petitioner. So will the strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction and alternation of buildings impose a practical difficulty or a particular hardship upon the petitioner? So.
Say no?
Yes.
Okay, so let's back up, make sure we understand the question.
Yeah.
Mark's got to rewrite these, man.
We appreciate you, though.
So the zoning code says that they cannot construct a taller than four, or a front
yard fence without a zoning variance. So the strict application of that would mean they can't, they can't build a fence in their front yard, right, without the variance. So would the strict.
Yes.
Impose a practical difficulty or particular hardship. Okay?
Yes.
So, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay.
We're in this together.
There's eight of us tonight?
Eight of us.
Yep. If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrational hardship on the petitioner.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And if the proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence conform with the standards set forth in subsections 10, 4, 7D of the zoning code?
Yes.
Which is four foot, 40% open, front yard fence?
Yes.
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 So then a motion with, we talked about the condition of making sure it is within the, within the property lines. Motion to approve the variance. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mike?
I can second.
Seconded by Janie.
Can we tell them to go anywhere to look at the property line if they can't, if they don't know? Like, is there any places?
Well, the only, the only thing you can do if you can't, yeah, you can, I mean, you can find public records, but you're going to have to find one of those stakes and start measuring. Yeah. And like we said, there's people in the audience that might give you.
Give him a card, yeah.
Measure twice, cut once.
Mike, or Matt, call the roll.
Nico?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Janie?
Yes.
Char, Charlie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tessie?
Yes.
I vote aye. Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, so you should be able to get with Sarah up here, get the rest, get your permit for your fence and et cetera, so. And then on the pool thing, like I said, you talked to her, to Sarah also, but they, I'm assuming that depending on how you want to enclose that part of the pool, they'll probably send the code officer down to check it and make sure it meets what, the six-foot requirement. Okay, thank you.
Please come and get off the stage for the whole thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, she's not.
No, but he may have a car to help you find the stake.
Okay, so the second order of business is a site plan approval by the KDB group seeking approval of site plan for development of hotel on the property located at 4615 North Prospect Road, Peoria Heights. And then also a variance application by the KDB group seeking variances for the building height, storefront glass requirements, decks and wall that projects into the village right of way, sidewalk width for the hotel. So we'll take these all as the same and who do we got today going to talk about this?
So we, I'm Paul Corey, architect with Farnsworth Group. We had a kind of a presentation of renderings at the last meeting. I don't know if everybody was at the last meeting, though. But I don't know if we, you want to just kind of walk through the variances?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to go find the list you had the last time. Give me a second here.
I have a question. Is there, I mean, looking, I didn't see any substantial changes from the, what you presented last time. Have there been any substantial changes to the design or?
No.
Okay. I mean, didn't, I didn't see any.
Yeah, those are the same.
They're the same, okay.
Drawings as we had submitted with the application.
Are you looking for the old ones?
I usually do have those.
Yeah. So the, well, let's talk through the variances first and then, so the building height, you said in addition to the building height provisions.
I can probably describe the building height variance.
Yeah, so you're basically saying that the hotel is approximately 55 feet, two inches, so there, it's a foot and two inches over the 54, right? And that's the variance needed.
And that's relative to the sidewalk on Prospect. The floor of the hotel, as you go up Durier, is, I don't know, it's another four or five feet higher than the sidewalk on Prospect. And, and the tall building doesn't start until you get past.
Past.
That would be west of the existing buildings. So it's actually, the tall building is actually.
So the tall building on Durier would be 52 foot four height off the, basically the property line at Durier. So it would meet the ordinance on Durier, but on Prospect, it's, because Durier goes up while the floor elevation.
So once you get up to Durier, you're actually within the height. It's when you're, it's when you're down next to Joe's that you're.
Correct.
So it's because the building's attached, we, you know, it's all one thing that just steps up tall at the back, we thought it was best to just ask for the variance.
This, this is one that all comes down to the interpretation and I would not even interpret the ordinance in such a way that this is required, but we might as well discuss it and.
Yep.
And the reason for the height is to get the extra floor.
Yeah. Yeah.
So does it meet the requirement where it starts on Durier? Like if you go back and where Durier is and.
Yeah, the actual atrium would be below the 54 foot level.
Right, where the four-story?
Am I correct? And then when you get back to the hotel, actually, then the tower is.
So it would, relative to where it is on Durier there, it would meet.
Correct.
So if you didn't do it, let's just say that you kept it like from Prospect and Durier, the same, like the variance height, would it just look like a step down? Like, would it just look weird from the perspective?
The issue with Prospect is lower than Durier.
Right.
The building's same size. So if you measured the height off Durier, it would certainly run into the merit.
So you technically couldn't, it would have to be just one. It would have to be, so technically, you couldn't do anything about it. It's just like the building has to be. Right.
They could structure the site plan in such a way that the tower fronted on Durier and then they wouldn't need a variance. That's why I'm saying.
Right.
You know, we could make them jump through hoops that they could jump through, but it's kind of form over substance.
Yeah.
Any other question on the heights variance? So then the next one is the storefront glass requiring 75% of the first-story facade surface to be glass or transparent. So, and you're going to have about 50%, right? Is that?
Glass.
Glass. Mm-hmm. But it's.
The 50%, the 50% is considering the existing buildings as well as the addition in the middle of the existing buildings.
So presently, that building is what, 10% glass?
No, less than that.
All right.
Like there are two windows like this big.
He was right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, in an existing building, it's, it's next impossible to get 70% glass because you're, to do so, you're really requiring some structural, like extensive, just structural rework of the front facade. We're actually putting some, I would say, huge openings in the front of the existing buildings, which is taking some structural work.
Yeah.
And then even, even to a study of just the addition, just the middle piece, and when you take in the roof into account and the columns into account and some of the planters, even that was only at like 76%. And that is basically a glass box. So it's, it's pretty tough to reach the 70.
I was going to say, I mean, I'm looking at, right, I mean, that's the. Yeah, exactly. Picture of the front. I mean, I don't, that's a lot of glass.
Yeah. And we went off of the sidewalk, you know, the level of the sidewalk and up, up from there is how we calculated it.
So it's on A 32?
This is on better view.
Oh, yeah. A 33?
Better view, a better picture.
And just for the benefit of those who weren't here, when we went through the pretty extensive exercise of coming up with the overlay district requirements, I don't, I don't think I'm out of line to say that we did not have this type of building in mind with that. I think it was the small shops, you know, the restaurants all along Prospect. We wanted, you know, more glass and consistency and this building is going to be an outlier no matter what. So I think this, this was not the type of project that we had in mind when we set most of those standards.
Appreciate you saying that. See, another issue on this building is the floor level. If you remember, when you walk between the buildings, you go up a few steps, so the floor level is already off. And so to put windows down into the basement space is sort of not really feasible either. So I don't know that we could meet, I mean, because of that alone, I don't know that we could meet the 70%.
On this A 33, I mean, I'm just kind of curious, but how come you don't have the windows just go all the way to the end, to where they meet in the middle? You've got, so as you're going up the center stairs, on either side, you have, you know, two spots there without windows? I'm just curious.
I think it was just the designer's take, we're incorporating a different material there. He's incorporating some wood slats into the facade.
Got it.
It's a way to bring in some other materials.
Those trees, I think, are already there, like even right now.
Those trees right in front?
Yeah, I think that there are trees.
That makes sense. Okay. It's good to meet you.
So any question on facade?
No.
Okay, then the project, or projecting awnings and canopies.
At risk of inserting myself too many times on this one, I, I left kind of scratching my head at the last meeting, like how do we approach that? Because it's not really a setback variance as much because it's, it's really projecting over the property line. Normally, our setback variances are when we have a 5% of the width of the lot setback requirement and they want to go, you know, 3% or something. I think the appropriate, I think it's appropriate for this board to rule on it as a variance request, but I think what the developer really needs is a license from the village to use right of way. Because the right of way, we think of the right of way line in terms of the sidewalk and looking down, but the right of way also goes up. And so to the extent it hangs out over the property line, I think the variance plus a license from the village, which would be the village board, not the ZDA. And so I'm going to bring that up tomorrow at the village board meeting and recommend that, you know, they authorize me to draw up an appropriate license.
So you would just create a right of way permit?
Yeah.
To encroach on the right of way with the deck and with the wall that we're.
Exactly.
And so it wouldn't actually be a variance, it would be a permit.
So it's not really so much a variance. To the extent the overlay district plan applies here, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and ask for the variance tonight. That way, you're just kind of belt and suspenders, you've got it covered.
So like a tree on someone's property is growing over the property line, that property that it's encroaching on could theoretically come and cut that tree?
Exactly.
We want to have a license for them to not have their balcony cut down.
It's technically an encroachment into the village's property, but it's, I would be concerned, and these are maybe questions to ask, but, you know, it's sticking out between two and three feet. That's all sidewalk. If it encroached enough into the right of way where you'd have to worry about a truck, passiver, you know, this doesn't do that, but those would be the kinds of concerns I would have in terms of aerial, you know, elevated encroachments into the right of way. At ground level, everybody can see, you know, the wall, that, that's obvious when you're walking by, but this doesn't give me any pause in terms of safety risks. So anyway.
How do we deal with like an awning that would go over?
Yeah.
Does that not matter because it's not permanent?
We do have that provision in the overlay plan for awnings. And we want awnings, right? And, you know, so you're, you're liable for your awnings if the awning falls down on somebody and they get hurt.
Or like a sign, because.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we have that provision in there and, you know, there isn't a provision for, you know, four-story hotels with balconies, so I understand why they're.
It's a little different.
Looking at that, but that, that's a square peg in a round hole. Yeah.
No, I just want to make sure I'm looking at this right. So this.
Yeah, we don't have one, though.
This is the wall we're talking about.
Yes.
And then this is, would be the awning or the deck?
It's, it's actually not going to be a deck, so people are not going to walk on that side. So it's not designed in.
As a, as a balcony?
So it is a canopy, it's not, was it your talking sphere? No. This is here?
So like right here?
So correct, so the part that is beyond the left side of the building would not be inhabited, it's stuck to the front of the building facing.
So this is the wall on Durier that'll go up?
Well, it's no different than the apartment building across the street. Just say apartment building across the street was right on the edge of the sidewalk and we have balconies sitting right there, a separate mark. I mean, if that's what he looks at, then the balconies would be drawn straight line up from the sidewalk and they're there.
So you're saying on this side, on this side, that this isn't walkable, then?
Right, so in the end, we're not.
It will be on this back side.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why, I guess that's just a.
On the very, on the very side, below the Durier, elevation to the wall that's there to allow glass, to allow you to have a apartment building, you cannot have the wall, you can get light in the building. That's part of it.
For the windows.
So it's very similar to the wall that's already there that you were talking about?
Yeah, there, there's part of the wall, it looks like you're just. Yeah, we're measuring that and extending it.
How, how far off the ground? Like, so let's say I'm walking on the sidewalk, how far from the sidewalk would it be above my head?
You know how low the floor is?
That's probably a hard question, but.
It's like 15, 15 feet?
We're like 14 from, we're like 14.
You're going to be 12 feet.
12 feet, okay. That's pretty high.
Because the difference in height is about two feet.
So like if we were walking underneath what Zion social would be, it might be that same feeling, like the top?
I would expect it to be some.
Or what it was before? Yeah, just like that.
So there's, you said it's not walkable up here, so what is this space? This is like a.
So originally, it was, it was intended to be walkable.
Yeah.
But it's.
But it's, it's, we talked about eliminating it, but it does visually does a couple of things when you're coming off a prospect, it kinda gets an indication that there's something else back there.
Sure.
And then, and then without it, you'd have a, you know, just a really kinda blank...
Sheer wall.
Wall. So those...
So it looks like their windows, are they inlaid in this? Like, are they set back in the structure?
They're set back, the windows are in the wall of the building.
Okay. And then this, this is just aesthetics?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the shading device on the north side of the building.
An awning.
Above them.
It is an awning now, then.
It is an awning, really.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm gonna change my mind.
I know.
So I, and I think that is...
Would you need it for the retaining wall? That's the question, 'cause that is into the...
Right, and I think you do, I think just one license.
I think the retaining wall, you're actually sitting on the right of way.
Yeah.
It'd be better to handle it with a permit.
Yep.
To, that would be a typical...
So I'll, I'll take care of that outside of this time, I didn't wanna confuse that too much, but I think we go ahead with this tonight.
So it's just those three, really, right?
There's a sidewalk.
Well, it is, okay. I was looking at this, and they said they do not believe they require variance, 'cause they're maintaining four foot.
In other words, our face of our building meets the requirement.
Right.
And then we're still maintaining the four-foot traveled path of the sidewalk. So I was, I was interpreting that to we met the ordinance, but that's entirely up to you guys. In other words, we have an elevated sidewalk dining, like the edge, which you could walk through. And then we also have the sidewalk down below, which is free, which is a clear open area that's five feet wide.
And there will not be dining on the lower sidewalk.
Right, we may have the parking for...
So do you guys get what they're talking about here? We talked about this last time, right, where from the curb, going towards the hotel will be a sidewalk that's four feet, five feet?
Five feet.
Then they're gonna have some planters, a wall with some planters on it, and then another nine feet of sidewalk behind that, but it's gonna be elevated.
Right.
So you got five feet down here, but if you look at the front picture, from Durier, you'll be able to walk all the way down and come down that nine feet, but in that nine feet, they'll also have tables for dining.
Like on the other side of the street?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so the combined, that elevated sidewalk and the lower sidewalk is...
Nine.
Is nine plus five.
It's supposed to be 15.
So they, they have, yeah.
Let's, let's go ahead, any variance requests?
I mean, 'cause we have five feet down below, which is ADA compliant, because it's just a straight shot. Your top level one has ADA entrance at the top.
Correct.
But then, looks like it has a staircase down below.
That's correct.
Right. So from ADA perspective, I see five feet.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, nine and five is 14, so it's still one foot shy of the 15.
But then you have a planters space.
Oh, well, yeah, but... Is that, yeah, I was gonna say, that's at least a foot.
What's a planter with?
You can't walk on the planters.
Yeah.
I think we're nice to... Is it supposed to be 15 feet of sidewalk or 15 feet of space?
No, it says have a width, a sidewalk width of not less than 15 feet. So, I get that you have the planters, but you can't walk in the planters, so, I mean, that really wouldn't count as sidewalk space to me.
Okay, then we're asking for a variance.
Yeah. So you need, I think we, I think we need a...
I think you need a variance.
But are you guys required ADA to have the, I know, obviously, from the back, you have it?
Yeah.
Are you required both entrances?
Not very much at all.
So it's not required, but we do have it at both entrances. I didn't quite follow if that's what you were talking about or not, but we do have, basically, at the, at the street corner, at Durier, it's basically gonna be level. Our new terrace will be basically level.
Sure.
And so, but the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk steps down, so that's how we gain elevation. And then, once you get to that middle spot in the building, there's a little L-shaped ramp that ramps around the seating area.
Right.
Okay. To get up into the building.
But if I'm, unfortunately, in a wheelchair, and I'm walking down the street, and I'm passing by the atrium hotel, and...
You have to go the long way.
Right, I'm going, but I'm going, I've got five feet to navigate my wheelchair.
Correct.
Okay. See what I'm saying?
On the, on the lower side of it, or on the terrace?
If you're passing, if you're not gonna stop the atrium, you have a five foot...
Right, if I'm going, going, yeah, I'm going down to Joe's...
You have a five-foot trapway that you can pass the...
Correct.
Did you guys...
We're only, I mean, I think with the overlay district, it's required to be four is the minimum.
So if you, if you meet the...
But if you think about it, if you think about it...
If you meet the regulations of the overlay district...
There, there are maybe one foot of course, 'cause of planters, and I don't know, the plan, kind of like the planters.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's nice if you do that.
So again, actually, we ran it, but you're here.
I agree.
We might as well.
Yeah.
I want a new plan, I don't need any more windows.
So, I'm sorry, we had a side conversation over here on the five feet, but...
I'm gonna encourage the ZDA to consider it a request for a sidewalk width variance of one foot.
Of one foot?
Yeah.
I agree. I think that's what we should do too.
Did you guys do any plans that did not have elevated dining, as opposed to just having the dining on at the street level?
We, we did, and it's, again, because of the existing floor elevation on that building, it's about this high.
Yeah, there's a, there's a significant...
And it was, it's a real challenge from a serving standpoint, for servers to be running out there, 'cause they were gonna be coming down.
And around.
It was, it was just very, uh...
Having what?
It's gonna take them a long time every time they're filling up a glass to drink or bring out food.
So it's the same predicament that...
And less safe.
Edge had down, down here as well.
So Edge has their dining elevated, and you walk along.
Right. So it's a, the, with both buildings, kinda the issue is that it's a long building on a sloping street, where most of the buildings are narrow.
Because it's smaller, they're not...
And so the floors just keep stepping down as you go down the street, but it doesn't make sense, on 4500, it didn't make sense to step your floor inside the building.
And the buildings that we're tying into are already about two feet above the street.
Yeah.
So, so most of the restaurants along there, their front door is at the sidewalk level, so Edge is more similar to whatever.
Sure. Yeah, it's hard to imagine, but when you're walking next to that building now, that's why those windows are so high, 'cause those are actually first-floor windows. But half of the basement is above the sidewalk, basically, right, up there?
Yeah, it's not quite half.
Not quite half, but, yeah.
So we put, and we put the terrace somewhere in the middle, so it's not at the sidewalk elevation, it's not at the first-floor level. We didn't wanna bring it all the way up, 'cause then you have just kind of a big wall that you're walking next to.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna split the difference and make it look nice and feel right.
The elevated, it's not my favorite thing, the elevated sidewalk, I feel like it cuts up the flow of the sidewalk. I mean, I understand the challenges that you guys are facing with it, and I understand why you did it, I just, I mean, you're right, you and Edge have more of a unique situation because of it's such a bigger building.
And I was actually saying, I kinda like the fact that they're gonna have five feet of sidewalk...
For sure.
...in front of the building, that they're not gonna have tables on.
Yeah, that'll be truly...
It's truly, you can walk by, right, versus...
Well, it's almost...
But I'm, yeah, I'm interested, Tessie, what you're...
I guess because of the trees was why we don't have ours in, because a lot of, like, if you go to Chicago, most of the cafes that are on the streets are towards the building, so you're walking outside, not in between.
Which separate.
Yeah.
Is, I'm trying to think of the width of the sidewalk outside of Edge, is it under five, or is it about the same?
I, I was trying to think too, the sidewalk in front of the step up, is that five feet or is that...
Front of Edge.
It's bigger, it's wider than five, isn't it?
It feels like, just personally, it feels less than five.
That's what, it feels like it is, but I wonder if that's just the...
I don't really know.
Because of the wall is right there.
I don't know exactly what it is.
I think it feels like it's more than five feet.
The one on the street level?
Yeah.
An ADA route on a public right of way requires only three feet, which, see, which is, which is narrow.
We have to assume that it would work with the same 15 feet.
Yeah.
Right.
So that was before the overlay district, also.
Or close.
I wouldn't assume that.
Yeah, that was prior to the overlay district.
Yeah, so those windows were...
Did anything with that, because they didn't have some...
But have, we haven't even discussed, which I'm fine with.
That's actually a good point. Are you guys gonna be doing, you said you're gonna be doing, pardon? The containers? You said you're gonna be doing the containers, the overlay, the...
That, that is something that...
Overlay dining?
It's something that we're considering, the parklets.
Oh, yeah. We'll show them on the slide. What do you guys call them?
Parklets.
I call them parklets, I don't know what...
Oh, parklets, okay.
The overlay district calls us something else.
I just call them containers.
Yeah.
Sea containers.
Yeah.
Street seats.
Street seats, yeah.
I think there's a different...
I like parklet.
Yeah.
Parklet while you're...
I mean, I, I think you, you go for it if you need it, but, you know, again, it'd be a shame to put a boxcar in front of this beautiful building that you guys are creating.
And you have a lot of seating, so you may not need it.
I would totally agree with that.
I mean, I, I know you, you talked about not going up towards Durier, you know, in that sidewalk area with chairs, with tables, but I'd rather see that than down on, in a box.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, that also defeats the purpose of, the servers will have to go down, and what you were saying, it goes against that logic.
But, so we, I mean, we haven't even talked about any conditions yet, right? Like, I don't, I don't think we maybe need any yet?
Yeah, no, we haven't.
Yeah. Seems pretty forward.
So you're, it looks like you are, well, we're talking variances, are we doing the site plan?
We're doing variances. Right now, we just went through the variances, and I think that's the last variance, so...
And it, and it does make sense to do the variances first, not in the site plan, even though I think the agenda has site plan first.
Yeah, I think that's it, that's all it's still.
So, that's all the variances, I think, that they're requesting, so do we, let's shift over and look at just the site plan in general, and then when we come back to do the finding of facts, we'll do the variances and then the site plan.
Okay.
But let's just talk about the, the site plan. So you showed us the site plan last time, you said there were no real changes, right, from anything that we talked about as far as...
There, there's nothing changed on the submitted site plan, we are working with burying all the utilities, and so that corridor where the dumpsters are, is, right now, it has not changed. There may be some changes in where transformers are located and where dumpsters are located, but they would all be enclosed, in enclosures in that, in that little area right there.
It's on C2.0, which shows all the transformers, TRs along the back alley.
And then, basically, the transformers and the, and the dumpster enclosures are all in that alley there, and we're trying to coordinate with, with Ameren on where we can put everything, so some things may be swapping locations, but in general, the, that's the only thing that I anticipate changing.
So your transformer isn't gonna be out on Durier?
Not unless you want it there.
That's basically, that's basically behind Jones'.
Now, having said that, there, where the pole is at the, the west end of the project, I believe the switch box has to go there, and Ameren is not doing anything underground anymore, so I don't think I show that switch box on the...
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, 'cause we have another one where they're putting a big switch box right out in the middle. So where was that, where would that go?
That would be on the west side of the west entrance, off of Durier.
West side.
So in like the landscaping area?
There.
Okay, back there.
It's up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that I'm like an Ameren expert, but they had a switch box, which was like as big as a transformer, and then they have another something else that's not quite as big as a transformer?
Yeah.
What's, and that's called a...
I'm not sure.
Junction box?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
They used to do a lot of this underground, and now they're making us put them all above ground, so we get big green boxes all over.
So is there gonna be a junction box somewhere too?
Uh, there may be a junction box where we jump across Durier to serve the jewelry store building.
I think it's gonna be just, I think it'll be, is it in the right of way?
Yeah, it'll be in the right of way.
And just, maybe just west of the hotel.
Yeah.
I think it was out there. There's, there's a...
Yeah, and the utility plan, and worst of all, so, so right here, the overhead line comes from here down to approximately right here right now, and then jumps across overhead, and we're putting all this underground, so the switch is gonna go there, and then I believe a junction box is gonna come here to push this underground, and then this'll go to a transformer back over behind...
Yeah.
The jewelry store. And then there's three transformers here.
Those are, this is all behind like Joe's and all these guys?
Yeah, this is Joe's.
So this whole, that, all that's kinda rock right now, you're gonna do, is that like a wall?
There's an existing wall here now, and then this, this is just an alley coming up, and all of these businesses have their rollouts kinda tied around.
Well, right now, you can walk through to those businesses, so can you still do that?
You would still, well...
Are you, are you gonna have to walk all the way around, or can you still cut through?
Well, you can cut through, but you're gonna cut through to the rear, I guess if you want to use a rear entrance.
Well, I go in the back of Joe's all the time.
Okay, well, then you can come up the stairs and go that way if you want the scene across.
There are stairs here, okay, so, got it. So you can't, so you can't cut across this, is what I'm saying.
Uh, we could limit that if...
Because that's what a lot of people do, I'm just kinda curious what's happening here.
What's happening here is basically, this is parking, this is kinda the entry up into the hotel.
Right.
So this'll be kind of a landscaped area to direct these people up here.
Is this gonna be all landscaped here as well?
Uh, not as much, 'cause we just don't have the room, and this is where all the kitchen, the back house of the kitchen is, and the back house of all this is.
Okay.
So this corridor right here is kinda the, the service area.
Okay.
So, so back to this junction box. This is the building.
Yes. Yes.
So if it's, if you can put a junction box there, it's gonna be like out in the middle of the sidewalk.
That's what I was thinking. We've got it to fit something.
Not to be picky, but we had some issues with, I have issues with Ameren anyhow, so.
So I don't know if you heard Mark, but he was saying that the, there will be no Ameren equipment disrupting the sidewalk. Our sequence is to get the zoning approval, the approval from the village, before we start engaging, or we're engaging Ameren, but before we kind of check to Ameren to start their engineering work, that's why we're here first, and that's why that's still a little bit of a moving piece.
Well, and I, I get that, but there was, we did the exact same thing with another site plan, and then they came back and said, oh, we're putting a junction box here, right in the middle of the front of the building. A big five foot by six foot green thing, and it looks like, you know what? So we, that's why I'm asking the questions about this, I want to make sure that we don't come back-
Yeah.
And say, oh, here's Ameren's plan now, because Ameren's gonna do the easiest thing that they can do, right? They're gonna make it look, they don't care what it looks like, they're gonna say, oh, well, I can run one foot less of wire, I'm gonna put it here.
But we're paying for it, so.
I, I get that.
Well, no, we're paying for it, so we have some say in what we, so, so like this switch here is back actually in the parking lot, it's, so it's not even out on the right of way, it's back in the-
Yeah, that's, that's the switch box, okay.
Yeah, that's the switch gear, and then we're running up here, and this is a three face sectionalizer, which I have no idea.
That's a junction box.
You said it's so common.
Two twenty, two twenty-one, whatever it is, but that's drawn to scale, and so that's sitting behind the sidewalk, right off, right in front of the parking. And then, and then it goes underground all the way up to here, and then cuts across, and then that's a transformer that's on an eight by eight pad there. And the red, the red is what is the size.
So that's in like a green space? No?
Yeah, that's in a green space, so that's between back and the sidewalk.
So that's like here somewhere?
Well, it's actually right in front of that car, that's right.
And the other one's like here?
No, the other one's actually in a parking space, it looks like.
Oh, okay. So will that not be, I don't know what these things look like, so that wouldn't-
This one's big.
Okay, so that won't be a parking space anymore?
No, that won't be a parking space, so I'm one shy of my parking.
So it'll be like that.
I see, I wanna look at my view.
So, it's gonna be here, so that parking space will just be more like green space, I'd assume, yeah. And then the other one is right off this handicap, but that's green space sidewalk.
Perfect, and you can put green space around this, fine, right? Because they're in protected boxes and things. I mean, you have to have access at some level, but-
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, we can-
It may kind of, that's why you're probably gonna just make that bigger, right?
Uh-
I don't think you can put anything around them.
Not at all?
But no, usually, they don't like it, but. Well, in the city of Peoria, we gotta screen them, so we gotta plant right next to the transformers.
But is, I think, I could be speaking for them, but I think you have to have like one access to where they can get to it if they need to.
Right, so, in other words, what you see here is, the red is the size of the actual equipment.
Okay.
The hatch blue is the service area that they need cleared to be able to service inside the missile site.
Yes, so they just go around it.
And I think they're generous, in other words, this electrical one here drew this up, so I think there's a national electric code of how many feet you need in front of-
Yeah.
Yeah, you need clearance all the way around it.
Yeah, and then you need so many feet all the way around it, I think they've got them drawn really large, but in general, that's, that's the one on Durier, and this is the one setback on Durier.
Okay.
And then these other transformers, this is, they're showing these transformers back here.
So you'll get that, and then could we, at some point, after you get all these things done, could we, at some point after this, do we get to say anything else about what gets developed in green space talk?
I think it's done, but this is our, this is our site plan.
I mean, I'm always here for the green space.
Our intention with the, the blue hatch area is to do sort of non-woody plants, sort of tall grasses and things, stuff you can trample.
Yeah.
So, big concrete pad, and then we get pushed back all the time, especially from landscapers, that I can't plant it here, people are talking down to it.
Right, and concrete.
We manage to get it done.
So you've got something with shallow roots you can put in, and?
Yeah, okay.
And worst case scenario, they cut your grass, right?
That's why you want trampable.
If they come to service it, then.
Right.
And if it blows out, it creates a nice part of the landscape.
Kindling.
So Steve, so I hate to be a stickler on this, but this electrical easement behind those businesses.
Yeah.
Right, with the transformers?
Yeah.
So, explain to me more what that's gonna look like. Is that just gonna be all concrete with three transformers, and it's all flat?
Well, these are dumpsters here.
These are, oh, these are dumpsters, and then transformers right now, transformers right now, so.
And so we're running into some clearance issues, so.
Are these your dumpsters?
No, what we're doing is, this dumpster is, well, they're all gonna be our dumpsters, they're all gonna be our-
Because we got dumpsters right here.
Yeah, but these guys are gonna use, so we're-
So you're gonna get rid of their dumpsters?
We're gonna clean up the back there.
Okay, so, which, which I'm, that's what I'm thinking, because I mean, I had an office space in this building where the atrium is, and I had office space here, so I would walk back and forth, I go in the back, this little olive garden thing, they have this cool back area, I can see them wanting to open it up, so what are we doing to make this, this is gonna be a kind of an eyesore to some degree, so how do you?
And-
I would love to say tall grasses around this stuff, or something.
You have to be able to get, at one point, we talked about putting dumpsters.
That's way too far away for these guys.
This one is six foot by four foot.
They're just gonna leave it there?
Clean it up later.
Yes.
At the higher level?
So I went back and I said, why can't you put it back?
Oh, yeah, we can do that. But it's, 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 it's dumpsters.
There was, I took it down.
To you, hasn't it been like if you walked behind the buildings and you saw all those dumpsters?
Well, right now, there's dumpsters right here. Right, but, I mean, I would park here and I would just walk straight across, it's, it's level.
Well, you couldn't before though, because there was a fence there, there was a gate, or not a gate, but a, a embankment of guard rail, so you could not walk through there, so I tore all that down, so there was access through there.
Okay, so I was, that was what I was gonna ask, is-
There was a, and if you're parking here, you shouldn't be to go to Joe's, you should be eating here and coming up this entrance.
Exactly.
This is the hotel, right?
Well, but if I'm going, okay, so this parking is only for the hotel?
They own this parking.
Okay, got it.
So, you know, right now, there's plenty, we believe there's plenty of parking between the paths and the hotel and everything we show, I don't know that we're gonna sign in.
How are you gonna police that?
I don't know, I'll take care of that later. I mean, it's all of our property back there.
Right.
I mean, it's just like, right now, I mean, good neighbors like with Joe, I'm letting him come onto our property right now for his dining underneath our awning.
Right.
I don't know if you noticed that, so he's coming all the way up to atrium, so I'm not charging him for that, I'm just-
Yeah.
Doing a good thing, so, we'll be, we'll do the same thing, but you know, I will have, that space behind the hotel will be for our clients only, just to make that very clear.
This is for sure, but the parking is only for hotel.
Well, not necessarily.
But possibly, but possibly it could start to, got it.
Right.
But then they own the-
But that'll be an issue, I mean, it's been an issue in the past, I mean, didn't you try to charge?
And that's why I bought the church back there for extra overflow and also for employee parking eventually too.
Right, right, I remember that.
They're gonna have employees park at it.
Correct, yep.
So that guard rail around that electrical easement's how high?
It's probably-
And, and is there any landscaping in that whole area?
No, I mean, that's not really existing.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, that's all gone.
That existing one, that?
Yeah, well, no, that'll come out.
Right, okay.
But, but people aren't, you'd have to jump the guard rail unless you're crossing the way up.
Yeah, yeah, way up, way up here, where it kind of just-
So right now, all the dumpsters are on the property like a Joe's, right against this building, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna put a centralized location for all the businesses there on Prospect to use one area for dumping and for the garbage, that way we don't have garbage cans skewed all over that place and it looks like an ugly ice or-
I mean, I trust that you're gonna do it good. I just, I walk, I used to walk that alley, I used to have an office in the atrium in the building, and I just, and I just go back and forth, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't, isn't some just left behind.
The dumpsters will be in enclosures, so it's gonna be in-
They will be, okay.
Yeah, so we're taking everyone's dumpsters and putting them on ours, so it's compact down and-
And those are gonna be enclosed?
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, because right now, it's ugly, if you look back there, you see all the dumpsters up and down the alley.
Got it, okay.
So.
Looks great.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're probably gonna have to do something with that parking, because you only have thirty-one spots behind the hotel, right now.
Right.
Right, unless that gets expanded, you're gonna have to reserve some of them down there, because you only have one room then.
Correct, that's correct, and that's why we have the overflow into our other parking lot of the paths.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I-
If I, if I was coming to stay at that hotel and you said, oh, be a park-
Well, and I think we talked about posting some of the parking spaces as hotel guests on their hotel.
She did, I mean, because also wasn't Pearl gonna take some of that, like, some people might be coming on a bus from the hotel, I mean, not everybody may not be having a car there.
No, 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 but-
So, I mean, you can cross that-
Yeah, but no, through, you're right, we should have fifty-seven parking spaces for fifty-seven rooms, kind of.
No, I know, but I mean, if you, if you go by the, it's simple math, pretty much one per parking spot, you're not gonna have very many with two, but you're gonna have some with two and three.
Right, but I'd rather have, underbuild the parking, and if it's a problem-
No, no, I get, I'm just saying, he's probably gonna have to designate some of those spots for the hotel, because otherwise you're gonna have-
Well, technically, aren't they all for the hotel?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, technically, yeah.
Okay.
I'm selfish.
All right, so here's a question, as a newbie to the group here, parking in general, so just in the Heights, parking in general, can somebody enlighten me on maybe past conversations or about parking in general?
Some people think we don't have enough, other people think we have plenty.
Right.
That's my enlightenment for you.
Got it.
And so Charlie, in this instance, there's no requirement for parking.
Right. Well, that's a good.
Seriously.
Really though, it's both.
Six one half.
Right.
You get a hotel guest, the park, you know, most of the time.
Yeah, it's totally up to them, we leave it up to the, it's a business decision.
Right.
If you open a business and everybody's gonna drive to your business and nobody can park, you're gonna decide and find some parking.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was-
We knew the question was gonna come up, so we provided a parking analysis to show that we believe we have enough.
My question is, is it, just will it have a detrimental effect on any of the other businesses along that strip, is my question really? That's kind of where I'm thinking.
I mean, I would hope some of the businesses are-
Benefiting.
Or, or, and there's different daytime parking, you know, there may be in the transition between when people are leaving the hotel and coming and checking into the hotel, there's some of the Olio and Vino and some of those shops that are a little bit more probably busier during the daytime, so that's a good time where if some people are using that parking, we're not doubling up on parking that we don't need, because people can maybe be able to use that same space.
And the, the, this is a, they have a business district for this very reason, I feel like they have, they charge a one percent tax to people who dine and, you know, support those businesses downtown, so if they need more parking as a, as a business district, maybe it's time to buy a church, and, or something that's abandoned house and make more parking, just like Craig did. So I don't think that we need to fault this hotel for playing ahead, and, you know, the other businesses can have to swim in the pool that they've-
That's right.
Well, I-
This is a thought from, you know, you didn't park on Cyber League back there for a long time, you know, that was a no-no, then it slowly opened up, somebody caved in a little bit, and I've been on board for at least twenty-something plus years, and total, you know, somebody, like, wherever that green, big green spot is behind paths, you know, that would be a nice parking lot these days too, but, you know, who knows, I've heard two, three plans from the same gentleman over the years for that piece of property, but that I remember distinctly was, was being built up and the restaurants were coming in, that space behind Cyber League.
Well, I, yeah.
No, you're absolutely right, I've got the plants where it was a gate and there was gonna be a charge to get into that property.
Right, but I applaud you guys though for allowing us to kind of see how it goes and see if some of the, using it, some is shared, because-
I do too, don't get me wrong, I do too.
Well, because the other thing with parking lots, parking lots don't provide a lot of tax money to the Heights, so, especially in a business district, so.
I'd like to see the restaurants actually incentivize the patrons to use Uber, and maybe give five dollars off for an Uber ride or something.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm-
It's a good idea.
Glad you guys are waiting to see if it's a problem before just, you know, making, CVS's parking lot's never full, we don't want a bunch of those things happening.
Or even across from Samuel, it's never full.
Right.
Are you guys gonna have valet parking?
Yes, most likely, yep.
Well, I'll throw the, are we done with parking?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna come over here, take my pen, and tell me how to get something forty-seven feet long, and another thing's thirty-six feet long to get back here, so, that's where we want, if we have any type of alarm or active fire, that area is gonna be hogging up that backside of that room, that's where we want, you know, I'll tie a stick right there.
Firetrips.
All right, I mean, engines and stuff like that, we can put out on Prospect over Durier, because we have a hydrant right there.
They know we're turning up that bolt.
Paps private hydrant, and it's on the old Paps, it's in there, I was just talking to you, it's, we lay twelve hundred feet, and normal is what we carry, that five inch, but, be close, I mean, we have to gap up a couple pieces here.
Well, I mean, if we need to add a fire hydrant, that's not a big deal.
No, yeah, yeah, right.
Consideration too.
Pardon?
While we had to add consideration too, because there's the pot of water supplied to the building and fire pressure.
Well, there's a fire shirer, you guys do a combined service, where I think you guys do a combined service where fire service, that's because the same service and squalls on the inside, and so we can, wherever the fire protection is for the sprinklers, we'll require to have a fire hydrant within a hundred, two hundred meters, you can add fire protection action, it's gonna probably be over here and then one with a fire hydrant somewhere.
That, I'm just thinking, you know, down the way you got-
How many rooms?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Okay, fifty-seven, somebody's gonna have a medical, you know, so I would encourage them to put my stuff in back parking lot, but the back end is rather a blind prospect, if it's somebody that's got, having a heart attack at the table in front, yeah, a blind prospect.
The, the issue is that these buildings are staying, so their floor elevations are set.
Right.
And they're above prospect, so the steps have, so the steps, this building elevation back here is matching, am I correct, is matching the floor elevations here.
It's, no, it's higher. Steps here, and then it steps in the middle of the building, and this is higher.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I talked to him last night, so you come in here, a couple steps up, a couple steps down, you're right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. What is your-
No, no, I'm just, like I said, you know, in a pre-plan, we're not even there yet, but, you know, since it's a four-story building, and, you know, I gotta think ahead.
Did you, are you talking about bringing up pieces of equipment, a large piece of equipment, on that shore?
Yep.
What are you doing?
You couldn't have it on Durier?
Well, they got a hydrant, they got a hydrant adjacent to their, their sprinkler, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But, I mean, yeah, I mean, would we set up on Durier, it just depends where you got fire.
Right.
But I mean, in order to evacuate people out of four-story buildings, I would like to have my stick right there.
No, I'd make sure that's-
I really would, I got no other-
Well, probably if you go for prospect, you got to reach over against it, so.
I got that reach, and I'd probably have to hog up, you know, one third of the ladder like that, because I got a step back, but I would have done, so, if I could have that, or directly-
The front is gonna destroy, we're gonna have a plus mark. We're gonna have a plus mark. I'm not, what's your?
I'm just saying, how big is the? It's forty-seven feet long.
Forty-seven feet long.
I can hardly turn it, I can't go through there, let's see, forty-seven feet long, forty-seven for long is like a box truck, it'll probably fit in there.
Too, too quick, we're gonna do the paper area there, so you pay us to support a fire truck, it's probably different.
That's seventy-eight thousand pounds.
But there's, there's a can be over here, right?
There's a can, you can't be over there.
That's what I thought.
Then you're not gonna, then you're not gonna get anything.
Well, you might get through there, but you can't get a fire truck. I don't have a setback. Or not, it could sit right here on Durier.
I think so too.
Or it could sit right here in the alley.
I'm just really thinking it, trying to think of it.
This herd here is set up so that they can box the water in the kitchen.
Right, I just walked it through.
So, so they could get something up here, right in here, and need it added.
Well, like I said, that's gonna commit to, I'm not really get off, so, definitely, definitely, I knew it. It's a four-story building, so I'm gonna scream, I'm gonna scream, I'm gonna scream, so, I mean, we're gonna have multiple pieces of that, that's on prospect, Durier, any place out in that parking lot, and if they don't have a car, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that's what you gotta think about when you got a four-story building with this stuff.
Does it have to, and it goes sideways, it has to go sideways?
We can come off, we can come off the, it rotates through six, I mean, we can-
So you probably pull it here, we can drive through, and then drive, and then spin all the way, you come out your back.
Now, we can back in, and actually, it's a shorter reach, drive through. You go sideways, you're right by your obituary. But I'm just thinking, you know, even with all the calls, I'm thinking down the way, you know, I'm assuming the rest of the road, bring the Hamilton, let's do that, get back, at least eight here, see what they can do. I mean, if you have a patient inside the hotel, I mean, at the top of front, like I said, we have those from time to time, you know, it's not so bad.
So, long story, do we, do we have an issue, do we need to put a condition on?
Don't think so, I don't think so.
Cooperative fire department on the hydrant placement.
Okay. Okay, so, let's go through the variances. Anything else first, anybody have anything else?
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate you guys coming last, last time, and made this-
and made this process, even though it doesn't maybe always feel like it much more seamless. So I appreciate, and I, I got the privilege of watching all three hours and fifty-six minutes of the last meeting to draft these minutes yesterday, last evening. So I know you spent over an hour with us at this last meeting talking about this project, so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate Rick proposing and asking that they come here, so thank you so much on that.
Sure.
Happy to.
And Rick, before you forget, we need to make sure there's no other public comment before we.
Oh, yeah.
Dive in.
I just, so I'm, as far as the landscaping, I'm assuming, you know, the trees and the bushes and things that we're seeing here are what, going to be in the final?
Possibly, I guess not, but that should still, but it's our, our hope to do that.
Okay. Something similar in terms of that amount of landscaping?
That amount of landscaping, yeah. Yeah, we have, they get pleasing the eye, but we'll have a progress, they'll change it if we don't work, or I have no colors or.
Right, right, well, yeah, there's no color in here anyways.
Okay, anything else?
So anything you can do with the landscape, please do. That's all, I'll leave.
Uh, anybody have any public comments? Okay. Julie? Public comments are closed, sorry. Okay, um, let's go through the variances. Thanks, guys. Um, so we have, so four variances. We'll start with the height of fifty-four feet, two inches. So will the strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of building structures, or the use of land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Approval of variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And no offense, NA. Okay. Sorry, I, I left my phones on purpose today because my dad's in the hospital and I wanted to be able to listen, if, if, in case somebody called me. So let's go ahead and, uh, motion to approve the requested variance for fifty-four foot, two inch total height for a difference of, what is that, one foot?
One foot.
Two inches from the variant, from the zoning code. Who wants to make that motion? And if any conditions, I don't think there's any conditions we talked about, but. Mike?
I'll second.
Mike, seconded by Matt. Okay, Matt, call the roll. Nico.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Janey.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Tessie.
Aye.
How about aye? Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, fifty percent glass versus seventy-five by a code for the facade. Will the strict application of the terms of zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of building structures, or the use of land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Who's this, the storefront?
Storefront.
Okay, sorry, yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Approval of variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 And can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Okay, so motion to approve the variance for the facade being fifty percent glass versus seventy-five percent with no conditions. So moved. Matt, seconded by.
I'll second.
Tessie. Any other discussion? Matt, call the roll. Nico.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Janey.
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Tessie.
Aye.
How about aye? Mike?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So, uh, third, uh, variance, the awning and wall, so the wall will project into the right-of-way and the awning will project into the right-of-way by two and a half feet on the Durie side. Will the strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures, or to the use of land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
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 Variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Approval of variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Tess.
Yes.
Yes.
And can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of this comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 I wanna make sure I had those dimensions right. Um, so the, uh, the wall extends into the right-of-way six point two feet on Durie and the, the awning will be two point five feet, is that correct? Yeah. So, motion to approve, uh, the request for variance for the retaining wall on the Durie side to be six point two feet into the right-of-way and the awning project two point five feet into the, uh, right-of-way with no conditions.
My motion.
My second.
Nico, seconded by Janey. Matt, call the roll. Nico.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Janey.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Tessie.
Aye.
How about aye? Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, and then the front sidewalk on prospect, a variance of one foot from the fifteen-foot requirement. They'll have nine foot of elevated sidewalk space, one foot of planter and five foot of, uh, lower level sidewalk. Will the strict application of terms of zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of the buildings or structures, or the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Approval of variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
And. And can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Okay, so motion to approve, approve the request for variance to have the retaining wall on the, on the Durie side of the project.
This is sidewalk.
Sidewalk. Oh, sorry. Uh, okay, I was doing so well there. Looking at the wrong line on my sheet here. Uh, motion to approve the request for variance for a sidewalk variance of one foot, so they'd have nine foot of elevated, one foot of planter and five foot of lower level sidewalk with no conditions. Who would make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Charlie? Seconded. Seconded by Jack. Matt, call the roll.
Rick, I'll, is this, um, open to, uh?
Oh, any other discussion?
Yeah.
So, we're sure that we have five feet of unobstructed lower level sidewalk. At the running, we got nine feet up top, but down below we have five, is Rick's understanding the way we're presenting this question correct? Five feet unobstructed?
There will be five feet from the outside of the planter to the back of the curb.
Five feet from the planter?
To the back.
To the street.
To the back of the curb. So the top of it is a half a foot, so.
Okay.
We would normally have a sidewalk in the back of the curb to your unobstructed.
Okay, so we have, we have five feet and.
We'll give five feet.
We, we're gonna get five feet.
Plus, plus a curb?
Plus the six inches of the curb.
Got it.
Okay. So the, my only question on that, no obstructive is, then that, that will not be for dining?
What was that? Yeah, there's no planter, planter.
I said that will not be for dining though, down at that level.
Like just sidewalk, plain five feet sidewalk, yeah.
Well, it couldn't be by code because you'd have to have four feet of walk space, right? And you can't put a one-foot table in. The overlay requires four feet. They're giving us five. Yep. And we're gonna get five. Okay.
So overall, we'll mind this one.
Okay. So I think my concern's at number four and I said about the public good, that addresses my concern, that's, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks for clarifying.
What, what is the material of the planter? Is that brick? The material of the planters?
Uh, concrete, most likely.
Okay. I just, my, the question I'm, reason I'm asking is because the concrete on the, on forty-five-hundred building is starting to deteriorate on the side. Um, I don't know why that's happening, it just, it's starting to look a little unsightly. Um.
We have a better contractor.
But the, but the like tan area, that's concrete as well as the, I mean, there's kinda some gray areas that look like where the tree planters would be, but then the other area, it's just, it's just gonna be concrete as well.
I'm sorry, what was?
Um, so, there, there's a tan area on the, the drawing where the wall is, and so that's just a kind of, like a colored concrete probably?
Is that a curb or a wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So you guys are gonna try and use.
And that's one foot thick, right?
What we'd like to do is the, is board form concrete.
Okay.
Get up to the Betty Jane, the new railing and stairs.
Yeah.
That's there and has that.
Okay.
You should see the gray of the boards in it.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully it would be something, because the, it's kind of concerning that the one in forty-five-hundred, and that's not your issue, but it's already starting to kind of deteriorate. Okay.
No, it's good.
Doesn't look good.
Any other discussion? Okay, Matt, call the roll.
Okay.
Nico.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Janey.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Tessie.
Aye.
How about aye, Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Those are the four variances. And then. Look, who, who, who's moved and seconded those? Oh.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Janey.
Charlie and Jack, the last one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that the only one you need?
That's the only one.
Okay, so now, uh, site plan. So, um, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the special use or site plan So, um, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the special use or site plan will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comforts or general welfare?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.